I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Okay, welcome to the March 11th School Committee Meeting. Dr. Larkin is unavailable this evening, so you are all stuck with me. Has anyone signed up for open forum?
No ma'am.
Thank you. For the consent agenda, we have minutes from the February 11th meeting. We have March's student enrollment report, and we have one teaching request, or home teaching request. Does anyone want to remove any consent agenda items for discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All those in favor? Thank you. On to new business. Dr. Sanchiyoni, you have the preparedness initiative.
I do. I'm going to bring up a presentation. A few right now. And talk to you about a topic that's on everyone's mind right now. It's how school systems and the population in general is dealing and responding to the coronavirus. I want to say to you that the number one purpose of tonight's presentation is to instill confidence in the school committee, the parent community, the student community, and our staff that in fact the Tivon and Public Schools are doing everything we possibly can to keep our students and staff safe. With that being said, we have a response team that's comprised of our five principals, central office administrators, and we closely are monitoring all the developments coming out of the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC, and the Rhode Island Department of Health. In fact, I was on a call today with the Rhode Island Department of Health at 2:00. In fact, every Wednesday moving forward, we have a conference call scheduled to get updates from them and see how things are progressing.
Is Ride on that call?
Ride is on that call also, yes. So, we know that communication is key, and you've seen a number of emails that I've sent out to both staff and students, including the school committee on that. And each one of those communications, we're taking the most latest information, we're receiving and passing that on to our population. That being said about communication, the most important thing I want to communicate tonight is this right here, that of all the precautions we can take as far as cleanliness and educating our students and so forth, we're only as good as the information we have. And so, in making this public presentation, I've sent this to our staff and now to our parents, is that you need to keep us informed. If any member of your household comes in contact, or comes in contact with the virus, or comes in contact with someone who's contracted the virus, we need to know. You know, it's the way that we then can make decisions on how we want to move forward with our staff and our students. In conjunction with that, that anyone who's confiding in us that information, I want to express that that information is confidential. We're never going to share a student or a staff member's name, or a parent's name with us, but the information is important for us to report to the Rhode Island Department of Health, so we can then have guidance on how to work with that in our school system. Other measures. So, we've analyzed many different parts of our school system and are putting in the best practices to deal with that. So, our buses now are clean after each run, so after the morning run and after the afternoon run. We work with chat wells to upgrade how we're cleaning our lunchroom tables. So, instead of using a common bucket and rag on multiple different tables now, we use a spray bottle and a disposable rag from table to table, so we can't spread the virus. Our maintenance department is due diligence now in cleaning all high area, touch areas, for example, banisters, doorknobs, faucet handles, things of that nature. And we've employed in our schools ultraviolet disinfectant wands. And so, if you walk around later on today, you'll probably see them out there using that. So, this is another measure to make sure that we're doing all we can to keep our schools germ-free and virus-free. Under precautions, we have now canceled an overseas field trip. I heard you just dialoguing about that, and a ski trip that was planned for an upcoming weekend. And we are evaluating all in-state and out-of-state field trips for the remainder of the year. So, each principal has submitted to me all the field trips that they have planned, and we can, we consider each one of those on an individual basis, and we'll make a decision in the best interest of our students. You've already heard me talk about the weekly call with Ride. Today, we learned, and I'll add this in, that they've asked that no, that we have no gathering more than 250 people. And so, I've asked Principal Ashley to think about that for next week for the concerts. Typically, he's assuring me they don't usually go higher than that. So, we're going to put some other precautions in place for the concerts, namely having prurale available for everyone to enter and have it on their hands, and then having a seat in between people you know and people you don't know.
Is that 250 with the students, so 250 total in the room?
Beyond the participants, yeah.
Okay.
And then our school nurses have been visiting classrooms, again, educating our students on healthy habits, and they've actually created a short video that we'd like to show you right now. It's really well done. I want to pay dividends. Is she still here? Ms. Delcourt still here? She did an awesome job, as she always does, putting this together. So, this has been liked and watched many times, and as you can see some of the data down there, six states, three countries, and so it's exceptionally well-done.
Hi, I'm Carla Ritchie Spencer, the school nurse teacher at Ranger School here in Tiverton. And I'm just going to review with you how to properly wash your hands. And hand washing is a great way to prevent yourself from getting sick any time of the year. So, the first step is you get your hands wet from water. You want to use warm water. Cold water is fine. So, you get your hands wet. Then you get your soap. And now, you properly scrub your hands for 20 seconds. So, you really want to make sure you get the tops of your hands, in-between your fingers, your fingernails, the palms of your hands, so you really get a nice lather going. And if you don't have a watch where you can check how long you've been washing your hands for with a second hand, sing the Happy Birthday song twice to yourself while the alphabet song once, and that will give yourself plenty of time to get those hands nice and clean. And then you rinse your hands. And then dry your hands. The biggest mistake I see people make with hand washing is after they get their hands wet and the soap on their hands, they immediately put them under the water. You don't want to do that because you will wash most of the soap away. So, make sure you wash your hands after you go to the bathroom, before eating, before preparing food, and after preparing food if you've coughed, sneezed, or blown your nose in your hands. And that's it.
Hi, my name is Lisa Biamonte. I'm the school nurse teacher at Tiverton High School. What I always tell my kids is do not touch your face no matter what. And all the students here, they've heard it a million times. That is the easiest and fastest way that germs spread, by touching an infected person, then touching an infected desk, touching yourself, touching your eyes, touching your hair, your nose, your mouth. And an interesting fact is that we as human beings touch our faces 23 times an hour without even really noticing it. So, when, especially now, when it's cold season and flu season, keep your hands off your face and you're promised to stay well.
Hi, my name is Laura Rocha. I'm the school nurse teacher at Tiverton Middle School. While hand washing is ideal, if it's unavailable, you can use an alcohol-based hand sanitizer 60%. Make sure you rub your hands vigorously until they're dry, and wash your hands when you're able.
Hi, my name is Joy Frain. I'm the school nurse teacher at Fort Barton School, and I'm here today to talk about when you should stay home when you're too sick for school. We have a few guidelines. If you have a fever of 100 degrees or more, you should not come to school. If you are vomiting or have diarrhea, you should not come to school. If you have a rash, especially with fever, you should not come to school until diagnosed. If you have any problems with your eye, like a red crusty drainage eye, you should have your doctor check it before coming back to school. If you've been hospitalized for any reason, you would need a note to come back to school. The other guidelines we have with fever is you need to be at least fever-free for 24 hours without the use of any fever-reducing medicines such as Tylenol or ibuprofen. Same with vomiting and diarrhea. If you've had that, you need to be symptom-free for at least 24 hours. And also, I would say if you're not feeling up to doing your usual activities at school, you're just too tired and lethargic and not feeling well, then you should also be home for that reason. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Denise Dure. I am the school nurse teacher here at Pecassa Elementary here in Tiverton. I am here today to talk to you about coughing and sneezing etiquette. Here at Pecassa, we all use our vampire arm. So, if we have to cough or sneeze and we don't have a tissue, there's no tissue available, always use your elbow. So, if you're coughing or sneezing, use the crook of your arm, just like a vampire. That will keep you healthy. If you can, use a tissue. And then immediately, get rid of your tissue into the trash basket. If you're able to afterwards, wash your hands or use hand sanitizer. Let's keep everyone healthy in Tiverton. Thank you.
So, I'm going to go back to precautions here, and it's not on here, but I'm adding it in. I want to make the school committee and the public aware that starting on Friday, we are going to send notification that volunteers will no longer be allowed into the schools.
Just going to ask that.
And we're also going to encourage parents also to only visit when absolutely necessary, and they will be then maintained or contained in our office area. So, we're going to, again, try to keep our students and staff as healthy as possible. So, we'll be sending that notification out tomorrow. And then lastly, I don't know if you've been following the news, but six school districts in Massachusetts just in the last 24 hours have closed their schools for 14 days. And you've seen that there's two schools in Rhode Island that have done the same. And the Rhode Island Department of Education came out and said, "Look, if you can figure out and provide us documentation that you can conduct online learning, we'd consider that." And so, diligently, all of our principals have been working hard to put a plan in place, and we feel like we can accomplish this. Now, certainly at the middle of school and the high school where we are, one-to-one, and our teachers have been trained all year, and they all have Google sites. Under the leadership of our principals, they've been putting content online, and becoming prepared to work in that environment in sense where content would be there, students would do their work, teachers would then become a coaching model where they would evaluate what students doing, and then during the day be providing them feedback. At the K4 model, we just met today with all of our grade-level leaders and our principals, and we're going to create a grade-level website, so kindergarten website, a first grade, a second grade, a third and a fourth grade. We're going to put resources on those sites, and then we're going to give our teachers a communication tool to reach out to parents, to assign students assignments, and our teachers then will be able to evaluate what those students are doing and be able to give feedback back electronically. So, you know, we're hopeful that we'll be fine until next week. We have an early release day next week, and we've just shifted the focus of that early release day to make sure that all of our teachers are ready to teach online. So, I think we will be prepared. We're going to submit that documentation to Ride for consideration, and you know, considering the fact, the wise choice to go one-to-one, and the training that our teachers have had in grades 5 to 12, certainly those grade levels are very well-prepared, and I believe our K4 teachers can also be up there and ready to go in a short amount of time. So, as you can see from this presentation, we've done a lot of hard thinking about how to keep our students and staff safe. And again, I'll say that this is done certainly given your confidence and everyone's confidence that we're doing everything we can from our perspective. So, stop and answer any questions.
Does anyone have questions?
So, the online, that's going to be in the event they tell us we need to close. It's not like each school is going to decide independently to just close for 14 days. It's if the, you know, edict comes down from Ride that, you know what, we're going to close all schools for 14 days. We want to, that's where this will come in. We want to make sure we're prepared.
Absolutely. And I would just say, it may not be all schools. It could be just the middle school or the high school. If that's where the infection or the virus lands, we could maybe maintain two or three of our schools and have to close one. So, in either one of those scenarios, we're ready to continue the education for those students.
And that would be done in conjunction with our administrators, I would assume, the Department of Health and Ride will all make the decision.
Right. Department of Health will make the decision to close us, and Ride will approve our educational plan.
Gotcha. Okay.
What is the, is there a specific trigger that's documented that would cause a school to close?
I don't think so. I think they're sort of figuring it out as it goes right now. I mean, there's, there's contact, how they've described it to me, there's direct contact, there's secondary contact, and I believe there has to be multiple direct contacts before they're closing a school. And they were really clear with us today on the phone that they want to see schools stay open for a number of reasons, because it may be the safest environment there, and for meals, and certainly for the educational process. But certainly, if it's been detected that the virus has entered a school environment and that contact has spread, then most likely, we would be closed.
And have you implemented any protocols amongst our schools to report in any observations? For example, you know, student calls in ill, suspecting the virus, or a family member calls in and says, "My student has had contact." Is there any kind of protocol that you've put together for communication with your administrative stuff?
Oh, absolutely. That's, I mean, that's part of what we've had here, that they would communicate that to me right away. We would contact that family. We'd want to know where that student was, what diagnosis that student was, then we'd have to start tracking the contact that student may have had with other students, and that's, all has to then be reported to the Rhode Island Department of Health.
So, it's not a case where the individual schools are reporting to the Department of Health?
No.
Or anything like that?
Yeah. They work to us.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions, concerns? Okay, thank you.
And we'll have this online, so if anyone wants to review it again, we'll be there.
Next on our agenda, under old business, the FY21 budget discussion. Again, Dr. Sanchiyoni.
Okay, and we're going to bring up a presentation you're familiar with, and...
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately. And so, I've truncated this. I've taken out all the preliminary data, the things you've seen multiple times, to just get you back to where we currently are and how we're going to address an unfortunate deficit. So, you're familiar with these numbers. The level staff budget is taking everything we do this year and just moving it ahead one year. And no new staff, no new programs, no new anything, just let's keep doing what we're doing. And that budget would come in at 35, and I'll use round numbers, 35.4 million. However, the difficulty is that at our current budget, and with an appropriation of 4%, which we're all aware is the maximum, that budget can only be realized at 33.2 million. So, which leaves us a deficit of 2.2 million. At some point, I would recommend to you to drain down our fund balance and our Medicaid as low as possible, which we could do for $400,000 in fund balance and 375 Medicaid, which then would bring the deficit to 1.4 million. Two key questions, I think, consistently have to be answered is, you know, why are we looking at a $1.4 million deficit? And that history, or that difficulty lies here in this graph, which shows the funding of the Tivon and Public Schools over the last five years. You folks have all been on the school committee and been part of this, and have seen what's happened here, and you can see the increases from 15 to 16, 0.6%, 17 to 18, 16 to 17, 0.6, 0.9, 1.1, and then last year was a 5.5. And so, when we look at a long-term deficit, what's happened is our expenses always exceeded the growth of the budget. Special Ed, transportation, energy, just steps and lanes are going up higher than a 0.6 or a 0.9. So, when you've been exceeding the budget, and then you plug that budget with one-time funds, when you roll to the next budget, you have a deficit automatically built in. You still have new expenses, so that deficit compounds itself, and it compounds itself, and it compounds itself. And as you've seen now that the fund balance and the Medicaid revenue is no longer available, you're stuck with nothing else to sort of fill that gap.
Before you go off this slide, I just want to, I know we talked about this before in last year. If anyone wants to go back, if you look at the inflation, rate of inflation during 15, 16, 17, 18, it was way above .6, .6, .9, 1.1. So, the point being, just, just cost of living increases were more than that. So, it wasn't that we were increasing spending frivolous, you know, being frivolous or adding things or going beyond our means, just inflation during those years was, was more than that.
Yeah, that's an excellent point. So, you know, people, I want to answer that question, and then I know at times people will say, "Well, you had this contract, and you know, you just gave out these, and I'll put quotation marks, big raises, you know, everyone can classify it as they see." But there's a fault in that, and even though there's a contract in place, this is the effect of that contract, that Tivon and teachers still remain in the bottom third of teachers being paid in Rhode Island. And you can see here, I had some comparison communities, and this is step one. This is where we recruit, and we try to bring teachers in, and Tivon is right there at the low end. You know, move-up sticks, you know, to a mid-career, so to say, step six, and Tivon and teachers are still near the end there. And then where they can max out, the top of their career, and again, I noticed, I'll say to you, the bar graph has gotten smaller, and I'm only as good as the data that gets reported. Some communities didn't report out their top step for 19 and 20, so I compared as much as I could, but you can still see, and even if I had more communities, I would suspect they would be to the right of Tivon, that a maximum. So, we granted a contract. It was well-deserved. Our teachers are as talented and work as hard as anyone, and it still is, you know, the low paying. So, that's not what's driving this deficit, and I think that's a key point to make. Another key point to make, and sort of not part of our operating budget, but a related point, and it's an important one, is that there's been a lot of work done in the schools, and that work has been funded by the fund balance, which is school department money. And we're fortunate that Ride has a strong reimbursement program, 35 to 40%. And so, the 1.3 million-so dollars that were spent on fixing the lights and the roofs, there's been a $700,000 reimbursement to the town. And so, school department money has come back to the town. You know, we're asking for $986,000. We basically funded 700,000 of that. It seems like it's a, it's a possibility to fund this 4%, if not above it. And just also to answer a question that's connected to our budget is, you know, what happened to the fund balance? What happened to Medicaid? And though this chart is, has a lot of data, might be somewhat hard to read, but I'm going to ask our Director of Finance, Amy Rodrick, to talk to you about this and where that money has been spent.
So, the question was asked, you know, we had approximately $6 million in quote-unquote reserves, which were a combination of fund balance and Medicaid reimbursements. And we were asked to spend that down. And so, the school department in 2019 spent of the fund balance, 1.6 million of that on lights and ceiling tiles and fixtures for the high school and the middle school. There were some other capital projects.
Right side?
Nope, no, it just keeps going in and out.
To the left.
Look to my left. And so, there were some other capital projects, like the school parking lot, handicap ramp, things of that nature. In addition to what Dr. Sanchiyoni was talking about structural deficit, we used 1.1 of that in 2019 to cover the structural deficit in the operating budget. Rolling that forward to fiscal '20, again, there were some other projects that we were undertaking. In particular, we did the Witten Wisdom Program, which is a new curriculum for, I believe, English. Is that correct?
Kindergarten, 3rd grade literacy.
And we are also in need, our, one of our trucks needed to be replaced. And then, the school committee had approved using approximately $518,000 for fund balance.
Balance budget.
I'm sorry, to balance the budget. So, we are anticipating at the end of this year, a fund balance of $456,000. Then our Medicaid, even though we had the Medicaid reimbursements for our special education students, effectively in both 18, I'm sorry, in 19 and '20, we've used almost $2 million to cover extraordinary special education expenses that were not initially budgeted. Again, that was very hard to predict based on the severity of the needs of the children and the services that they need. So, we are estimating, you know, between $300,000 and $400,000 at the end of June 2020 left in the Medicaid funds. So, it, we adhere to the directive. We used what we had in reserves, and there's really not a whole lot left.
Can I point one thing out, Amy? And back, the middle row, I think your dates are off.
Okay, we can fix that.
If you want to update that, if you're giving that to the budget committee?
Yep.
Thank you.
And so, to continue with an understanding of the revenue that's come in and how the fund balance was built up, and then how it was taken down, and again, I'm going to ask our finance director to talk about the historical revenue and expenses.
So, this is roughly a 10-year history of the funding, both from the state aid and the local contribution. This particular slide does not include the one-time fundings that we used. So, you can see that the state aid, for the most part, has been fairly consistent. There was one dip in FY15, but every year, we've gotten roughly a quarter of a million dollars or more increase in state aid. When we look at the local contribution, we were in the early 2010s, you can see we were getting 600,000, 500,000 or more in local contribution increases, and then sort of in the middle, 16, 17, 18, it was either level or actually reduced. But then you can look on the right-hand side and see that our spending was increasing, again, not just for arbitrary and unnecessary items, but again, the cost of living, cost of transportation, cost of health insurance. And in FY19, you know, included in our expense total are those capital improvements. So, the, so the excess or the operational impact looks a little bit skewed, like we just went way, way, way over budget, but that was not the case. But even still with that, you know, the funding did not meet the budgetary operational needs. Go to the next one. So, this, so this then takes all of that, the operational side, and then we count or account for the one-time revenues in mainly Medicaid, starting in FY17, and we're expecting all the way to use through FY21. And there's some other small revenue that we've received that's sort of minor, but it's included in the one-time revenue totals. In addition, then we have the capital expenditures, and then, as you can see, we have the annual surplus or deficit, and that over time, we went from accumulating a fund balance, and now we effectively, you know, have a structural deficit of roughly $2.6 million, just, again, accumulating year to year to year, where we didn't have enough revenue to cover the expenses that were required and necessary to keep the schools running and maintain maintenance of effort. Questions?
I do have one comment on the capital expenses. It's good to note that for the first eight years of this listing, those expenditures came from our operations, from our fund balance. They weren't a, they were part of our accumulated funding, if you will.
Okay.
For the FY20 and the request for '21, that is, those amounts are separate from our maintenance of effort. They came in as separate line items, and they came in in addition to the educational appropriation.
Those weren't large, though.
They weren't large, no.
Anything we were spending out of operations was probably less than 200,000. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't big money.
No, it's just, it's good to note, you know, as folks might ask, that is a change in our approach.
Correct. And so, if you take FY20 and '21, that's 800,000, so our structural deficit, if you take that out of the 2.6, we're still down to 1.8 million. You know, again, those are separate funding sources, and I understand that.
So, I'll take you back to sort of where we started, and that was, we have a deficit, and it's 2.2 million, and that's based upon a 4% increase. Again, I would ask you to consider using fund balance and Medicaid money to bring that deficit down to 1.4 million, which is where, as an administrative team, we began our challenge. And to cut 1.4 million, as all school systems and administrators know, you never want to touch people. They're the most valuable asset we have. So, we look at our expenses first, when we have to turn to using our, look at people, we look at non-instructional first, and then lastly, as a last resort, we look at instruction. So, with 1.4 million, we've put our cuts into those three buckets, and unfortunately, there is a third bucket that we had to get into instructional personnel. So, I want to review those cuts with you now. So, I want to review those cuts with you now, potential cuts. Let's hope that this can be understood. So, under, under expenses, right there, so these are all from our expense accounts. You know that our expense accounts comprise twenty-five percent of our budget, seventy-five percent is dedicated to our, our people. And so, here, there's not a lot of room to make cuts, because in essence, it's a very bare-bones budget to start. But some of the things that, I won't read every line item to you, but eliminating the late buses, our, our online textbooks, a small amount, taking a pause on purchasing Chromebooks to keep the one-on-one moving forward. And then, other categories like curriculum development and professional development, that are very important for us to sustain a high-quality staff and a high-performing staff. But again, when we're looking at a deficit, we're going to make those kind of decisions because we want to maintain our people. You can see the total, by stripping our expense accounts, was only a hundred ninety-five thousand. So, the next thing, as a team, we looked at is non-instructional. And here, it gets a little more difficult. So, we're looking at eliminating our truant officer, our SRO, five special education aides, the library aides at all three levels, the contact teachers at the high school and the middle school, an academic specialist at the high school who does great work with at-risk learners, and then our RTI stipends, which is a response to intervention, so teachers work diligently to keep students on track. Dropping our sub-a countdown, which is always a little risky proposition, and eliminating three days of our student assistance counselor, who is just one of the most key people we have on staff here. So, there's a lot on that list not to like, a lot on that list we'd like to bring back. And even with those cuts, a total four hundred eighty-seven thousand, so we're still quite a ways from the one point four million. So, the only place left to turn then was to instructional staff. And here, we had to make some really tough decisions. Two elementary teachers, one at Pecash, one at Ranger, part-time teachers at the middle school for ELA and social studies, a remedial math teacher at the middle school, a grade five teacher at the middle school, guidance counselor who splits time between the high school and Fort Barton, reducing our English Language Arts, excuse me, ESL services, thank you, for, from, down from point eight to point five. And then, unfortunately, when you reduce your staff, you also drop your health and your other benefit savings, so there's savings there to come with that. And that equals six hundred thirty-three thousand, so we're still not at one point four million. And I absolutely just said to our people, we can't cut another body. So, we went back in and we stripped expense accounts again. Every one of these accounts has been budgeted to actual. So, we're just eliminating our capacity to really fix things next year, to do things that we've been doing. So, we talk about maintaining our buildings, talk about maintenance of effort of everything that we own, the property and so forth, and we're just diminishing that capacity. But we made another hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in cuts. You can see the accounts there, HVAC, fixtures, shipping and postage. Again, we went back to professional development and so forth. And these, they look like line items, and they may not resonate with, with people who are outside our field of education, but these are painful. These are things that make a difference for us. So, then, we're finally at one point four million. So, these are for your consideration tonight. I know that you want to vote a budget number or reaffirm a budget number that you've already voted. So, I'll pause there.
What was the, what was the budget request again? Total thirty?
The four point, the four percent increase is thirty-three million, one hundred ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight.
Eight hundred eighty-eight.
Yeah.
Thirty-three, one ninety-seven, eight eighty-eight.
Correct.
So, to start off the discussion, I'm going to make a motion that we approve a budget request of thirty-three, one ninety-seven, eight eighty-eight.
Second. And discussion. Does anyone want to volunteer to start?
Well, one of the things I want to note is this is probably the fourth time we've looked at this list.
At least.
At least. So, we have looked at this list over, I, we haven't spent near as much time as the admin team has spent looking at this, but we have spent a lot of time looking at this as well. I know at our last meeting, we pretty much went line by line with, with our Director of Finance, looking for anything that, you know, we could find that we thought might be able to save, which I would imagine a lot of these.
A lot of these, the slides.
Came from that.
Yep, exactly.
So, so I just, you know, I just want to, you know, emphasize that this is probably the fourth time we've, we've sort of went through the budget, looking for everything and anything that we felt that we could save, you know, move something, keep something. So, it certainly, our, our task wasn't easy. I can't imagine the task that our administrators had.
I have two, I have two questions.
Go ahead.
Redden?
Are you all set down?
Yeah, for now, go ahead.
The general supplies, the scholar supplies.
I'm sorry.
Scholar supplies, you've got general supplies.
Yeah, yeah.
Those would be scholar supplies.
Yes.
Okay. And the rental of the copiers, we have no contracts with them that are tied, that we're tied to? Actually, we do.
So, actually, on the rental of the copiers, that was in one of the original lists, it's actually being added back here because we do have a contract, and that there's no wiggle room for us to reduce that. So, I left it on the original list and then added it back here. So, it's, it's a wash.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Sally?
I, I think, having attended the, the Budget Committee meeting last night, and thank you both for stepping up, really unexpectedly, to, to engage in, in a great discussion, I, I thought, with the Budget Committee. You know, a, a lot of good points were brought up, a lot of solid, you could tell, everyone in the room was concerned over the school budget and the impacts to cuts, that the cuts are going to have. And, and, you know, the cuts we're describing here today are assuming that we do indeed get our request of four percent.
Correct.
You know, if, if it turns out that we have less to work with, it's going to become an even more painful exercise. I can, you know, I agree with Mrs. Palas. I, I know in particular, the last time we met, we went line by line. Some of these cuts are pretty deep and will impact the operation of the schools. I understand that. And I think, no matter how we look at it, there will be some layoff notices coming out very soon. I'm hoping that we can keep it to, to the, the minimum level that you described here today. And for that, I will continue to support your request for four percent in, in the allocation from the Town of Tiverton. Does anyone else have anything they want to say?
I had a, a couple of things. I know, I watched the meeting last night, too. Well, I listened while I was working. One of the things, certainly, teacher salaries came up a lot, and I just want to remind everyone, and I think it's worth reminding everyone tomorrow, that our staff, all of our staff, took five years of zeros. While that revenue was not going up, I mean, we were getting two hundred, two fifty, two, two sixty, and, and during some of those years, we had all of our staff who were taking no increases. We understood that, that, those were some difficult years for the community, and our staff understood that. And so, now, to give really what is a very reasonable increase, I'll stand behind that all day long. I heard, I've heard a little bit of discussion, and I just want to put it out there, that if we left the region and went and, and, and did like Portsmouth, we'd save all this kind of money, because Portsmouth saved all this kind of money. I do challenge anyone that's saying that, and who's been calling me and saying that, that if you have information, actual factual information that that's true, I'd love to see it. Because I had a discussion with a couple of prior Portsmouth School Committee members. I've looked at their data, and I'm, I certainly have seen, I watched a few of their meetings, that they took a different approach because of control, but I haven't seen these hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of savings. And I have, and I have heard that, and I welcome any kind of substantia, you know, substantive data that I can look at, that somebody has to, to show us that. Because we, as a board, we, we as an administration, we have not seen that that would be the case. In fact, we had a study done three years ago, two years ago. We might want to dig that out, sort of revisit it, but I just wanted to put that out there because that is something I have heard and read several times. And again, if, if there's something out there, man, I'd love to see, I'm sure you'd love to see it. So, that, that is all I have. Oh, and we just got this, teacher versus enrollment. If we could just get that updated, that, that's nice. That's a great chart.
Good night, Mrs. Van Wirth.
Yes, Mrs. Palas. So, as you said last night, there was a lot of talk about the teachers, and anyone that was here or read the papers knows what we went through all those years and the nearly strike, one-day strike, whatever. And one of the reasons was, when I started here, the co-pay was a flat, eleven fifty. So, everyone knew, everyone knew what they were going to pay. We wanted to move to a percentage, twelve percent. Now, that makes a big difference, because you never know where healthcare, as we can see, is going to go. So, that was the huge fight that year. So, finally, it ended up, the teachers went to twelve percent. Then they went to fifteen, eighteen, and twenty. And twenty, at that time, was one of the highest in the state. At the same time, as Ms. Palas said, they were getting zeros. So, they were starting to go backwards. And it was the same with the administrators, and Council ninety-four even opened up their contract and gave their money back. So, it would all be the same, all those years, that's what we did. So, last night, when I was sitting there, and we finally came to an agreement to, to catch our teachers up, because they were last in the state, we were losing good teachers within the first five years, why not drive to Middletown and get so much more money over the bridge? And so, I had to sit there and hear, the school committee should be much more reasonable with their contracts. Well, my hair was on fire, but I said, just sit there, Sally, be good, don't say anything. So, anyway, everybody has to know that. We, and the police are the same, and the fire, everyone did the same thing during those years. So, the police just got four percent. Another thing they found out last, last night was that our teachers don't get paid to go back to school like the police do. And I'm not comparing, because my son's a cop and he has a gun, I'm not going to go home and get him upset. But anyway, I'm just saying that. They said the police got four percent, and no one said, well, no one said a word. And then, as soon as they hear the teachers got three or whatever, three point something, so I just want to remind everyone, that has a child or a grandchild that's going to college, and you do whatever you have to do to get them through tuition payments, came through my house, whatever years, the six go through. And then, and then your son says, he went to school and he majored in physics, and he majored in computer science. And he, and he's top of his class, graduates and says, Mom and Dad, I want to go be a teacher. And you go, oh, okay, you want to go be a physics teacher. So, they go be a physics teacher, and guess what happens? They have to go back to school. They ha, now he has to go take methods and materials, and he's like, what is this? I just want to teach physics. And they go and they're, they're coaches, and they go to the dances, and they're exactly what the school system needs. And then, they get all these offers from these private companies. They want them so badly, because that's what they need now, a physics teacher with a mind in that. So, they go off and they go off into that world, and I can't even tell you what they went, they may make. So, everyone that talks about the teachers, when, when our teachers start, they make thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand dollars, and then they slowly, after ten years, creep up to a salary. So, when they say that, don't, and, and one of the members of the Budget Committee said, this isn't right. Why are you always picking on the teachers? You don't talk about anyone else's salary. And we look at the salaries in the country and what different people get, and they're doing a, a one-day thing on Friends or something, they're getting millions of dollars each. And my head, it's just, you can't believe it. So, let's respect, I did a study on all the countries and how they deal with their kids in, in education. And Finland was one of the top. And then, I found out, they treat and pay their teachers like doctors. See, there's the difference, you know? Back in the day when I taught, you didn't make much money, but there was a reverence in the community if you were a teacher. And now, you're getting either. When I started teaching, it was, take your gum out of your mouth. Now, is there a gun in the locker? It's, it's amazing what, they used to have to have credentials, and you had to have good character, and you, but you didn't have to be brave. Now, you almost have to be brave to be a teacher because of what we're going through. So, we have to respect it. There's nothing more important than education to me, because if we take care of all these kids coming through these schools, and they can leave here with a career and a profession, and then they can take care of themselves and their family, and be proud and walk through the town, and it's amazing, it's amazing that people don't understand what we're trying to do here. So, it's pay now, or the Pew Study says, or pay later. So, that's the story with that. Now, the other thing is the teachers versus enrollment. There's always the conversation, you've lost students, you've lost students. People don't have six and seven kids anymore, they might have one or two, okay? So, we know all these houses are coming in the future, they've already been approved, so we know that. But anyway, what you can do in that case, the only thing you can do is if you lose enrollment, you can not have as many teachers. So, in two thousand and seven, we had two hundred teachers, and our enrollment was two thousand, two hundred eighteen. And then, in two thousand and twelve, we had a one hundred seventy-nine teachers, and it was one thousand nine to thirty-four. So, the five-year decrease in teachers was ten point five, the five-year decrease in enrollment was twelve. Right now, we have a hundred seventy-eight full-time teachers, okay? And we might have a few more, and the reason we will is because the middle, the grammar schools are exploding, and we might have to hire a bubble teacher. So, every once in a while, during the middle of the year, the superintendent will come and say, look, we've done everything we could, we put this kid here and that kid there, but we need a new teacher. So, those, those are just some really important facts that, that everyone should know, as we've sat here, all of us and the ones before us through the years, and tried to, to make this the best school system we could. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Borges.
Hi, Lisa Borges. I'm the Guidance Department chair down the hall. So, I was just a little concerned and wanted you all to know how I felt. In twenty twenty, the rise of mental health issues in the United States is incredible for our young people. The governor has spoken about increasing aid to schools for SEL. We just did an SEL screener, K to twelve. And when I see we're cutting the student assistance counselor and a guidance counselor, I just don't get that. The guidance counselor we're cutting does two days at Fort Barton. I did that job, as you know, for, for several years, when you first cut guidance, five, six years ago. It's an important role. It's not the same role that a social worker does or the school psychologist does. They can't fill those gaps that the guidance counselor does. So, that's concerning at the elementary level. More at the high school, I can say I'm very proud of the personalization we have with our students. It's very manageable. We're able to give the kids the time they need without rushing them out of our office because we have other things to get done. We do a lot of extra stuff for our school, for our kids, and getting rid of that point six, you might say it's just point six, that's an extra fifty-five to sixty kids on a caseload. That personalization that we've worked so hard to build is now going to plummet. It's, 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 it's just not feasible. Just as an example, today, I think I spent about two hours, two and a half hours, on an issue with one of my students. If I had even, now I have a lot more to do, and I have a smaller caseload, if I had even ten more students, I couldn't, I couldn't give that two and a half hours to that student in the issue that was there. I'm just so concerned that what we've built up over the years with guidance, how much we do for our kids, even if you think about writing letters of recommendations for seniors, the other two counselors are now going to, who's going to write those letters, those extra letters that are on their caseload? Some of those students that this, this guidance counselor services will now, next year, have their fourth guidance counselor in four years of high school. That's so not fair to them, not even a little fair to them. I just think, in twenty twenty, with what our kids are going through on a daily basis, the pressures they see in and out, I would think an SEL position would be one of the last things we're cutting. And that's all I wanted to say. As you know, I haven't been to many school committee meetings lately.
Thank you.
But this one, I thought. But this one, I thought, was extremely important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, do we have any other comments? So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
And now, we'll send this right to them, so we'll be on time.
Yes. This is the final operating budget that will be submitted to the Budget Committee and presented tomorrow evening. Yep. Now, just as a note, we did vote to approve the capital budget request on our last meeting, which was February 25th, of $595,500, and that was already voted upon.
You're good, okay. Bring that up.
Nope. Okay. So, moving on.
That included the things we added back, right?
Yes.
Announcements, scheduled meetings, reports. So, of course, tomorrow evening is the Budget Committee, where the school department will be attending once again. I will be there as well. And then, on March 31st, which is a change from our regularly scheduled meeting, we will meet once again, we're not meeting on the 24th. And Dr. Sanchiyoni, at a very minimum, you'll be updating us on your preparedness activities.
Yeah, we'll keep that on there as things progress.
Absolutely.
And is that going to be at 7:00 or 11:00?
I think we can assume that for now. All right. So, I would like to make a motion to move us into executive session under Rhode Island General Law 42465A1, job performance, character, physical or mental health, teacher, non-renewals, and administrator. RIGL 42465A2, legal advice, litigation, and budget issues. And RIGL 42465A2, legal advice, litigation, collective bargaining, NEA, Tiverton. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, yes.
And a second. All those in favor?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.